Meeting everyone, we'll call to order the Monday, February 7th meeting of the Committee of the Whole Community Development. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. I need somebody to move the second approval of our agenda. So moved by Councilor Cameron, seconded by Councilor Hunter. All in favor? Next would be disclosure of community area interest or the general nature thereof. Does anyone have any disclosures to make tonight?
None by me.
Did you fill out the necessary paperwork?
I did.
Yes?
On the nature of the disclosure?
Item six A two. Personal relationship.
So you'll be leaving the table for that discussion?
Yeah.
Alright, so moving on to number four, which is business arising from previous committee meeting minutes if there are any things to discuss.
I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So on page ten of fifty-one, for item number four, which is an application for the zoning bylaw amendment that seventy-one thirty-one County Road twenty-two. There was a discussion and an issue there with regard to derelict buildings on the property that was being severed. And I don't think that we put in the approval of the severance application or our approval of the severance application. I don't think we put a condition in that those buildings be that those abandoned buildings be demolished, but we certainly had a discussion about it. And here at this meeting, we asked if we could have a follow-up, and I'm just wondering if there is any follow-up to that issue. So through the chair, if I could.
Through the, through, through the chair, I did speak with the chief building official today. And he did confirm that the two identified buildings with respect to that severance have been demolished. And that he has done, he was on site and did follow up on those other buildings. And his opinion doesn't constitute a asterisk condition with respect to making an amendment to that zoning bylaw.
So just follow, so the buildings that are left, is comfortable that they're, they're not abandoned buildings and that they're secure, safe and structural?
From, from our conversation, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other questions in regard to business arising from previous?
One, just one other thing, so following up on this, where, where are we with regard to that zoning bylaw amendment? I just lost track of where we were in the process. Through, so through the chair to the coordinator.
Uh, through the chair, thank you. Um, the zoning amendment was passed by council. I cannot recall the exact date of this, sorry. Um, I can follow up with you on the bylaw.
Would you like to?
Okay, so the zoning bylaw amendment is done. Where does the severance then stand?
Uh, the severance was approved in twenty twenty.
Okay, has the severance actually occurred? That's the issue then, that this one?
I could confirm that with the counties, but the severance was conditionally approved in twenty twenty, and they had one year to meet the conditions of the severance. So the, I know the zoning bylaw was really tight on timelines. They were a little bit late in applying for the zoning bylaw amendment. And so I think that zoning, the severance would have lapsed on January twentieth. So the zoning amendment would have been approved before January twentieth. It might have been the December council meeting. I'm guessing at this point. But I know we were able to release the project conditions at night.
December council meeting. So can we get a, I'd like, just like to have a follow-up to know when that severance is going to be actually executed. I know that the applicants are interested in getting the severance done, and I just want to know for my own use exactly where that stands. So if we could get the community development coordinator to give us a report from the county so that we know that everything is on, on stream here.
Who's your next second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? What's the problem?
On item number five regarding the Turpin discussion we had, I think it's on page, sorry, eleven of fifty-one. It said that the applicant was offered to provide a formal clean, formal cleanup time, timeframe for cleanup. Has that been submitted? Because I haven't seen any work done there to clean it up.
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Mother. The, I recall that the applicant offered to provide this. I don't know that we took him up on his offer to give us this information. Um, I could, I can give an update though on the application. Turpin Contracting is no longer representing Turpin Farms. They are still moving ahead with the application, but Turpin Farms is working with Xander Plan to complete the application.
Thank you.
So.
Sure.
Okay, so did you, I'll defer to Councilor Hunter here as well. Okay, so I'd just like to, through the chair, get a clarification here. So Terrapin Farms is now being represented by Xander Plan. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, can can you tell us what stage this this project is at? Because we, when we heard from them at the Zoom meeting at our last meeting, I guess that would have been on November the fourth. They had indicated that they wanted to get construction started as soon as possible. And I'm just wondering what stage their whole project is at?
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have not received any additional documents from Turpin Farms on this application. We've given them a detailed list of what is still required for us to have a complete application. I think the most important item of that is the service thing.
So through the chair, do we have a, an ongoing communication with, with Xander Plan about this project?
Through the chair, no.
We don't?
No.
So the, the ball right now is in their court? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, yes, completely, yes.
Isn't that interesting? And have we had any, since this meeting where the principals from Terrapin, they were on our screens attending our meeting? Have we had any communication at all from either one of them, either the princ, the principal of either one of the companies?
Through the chair, yes, we've had communication with the owner of Turpin Farms to indicate that Turpin Contracting is no longer represented.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any further business arising?
I've got one more. And well, that's on, it's a, it's a follow-up, actually. It's on page twelve of fifty-one. And on page twelve of fifty-one, I reported that twenty, twenty-sixty-nine Dundas Street had been purchased by African Bronze Honey. And so I have two questions. Number one, have we had any follow-up from them as to what they're going to do with the building, applications for building permits, or do we know what's happening with that project? And then the second part of the question also concerns another building in Cardinal, which is the old grocery store. Do we have any updated call on what's happening with either one of those properties on Dundas Street?
Through the chair, thank you, Mayor. Um, in regards to twenty-sixty-nine Dundas Street, I know that the owners are working with our chief building official, but I don't have any details about their plans there. They've been working directly with you. Um, and I, I, I don't have any information about the grocery store in Cardinal.
Okay, so through the chair, back to the C A O. Has our chief building official, and we now have a new building inspector, has there been any follow-up with regard to the grocery store in Cardinal?
Through the, through, through the chair, I know that the C B O has spoken with the owners of the, of the grocery store. But I don't know what the, what the exact status is on, on that building.
Okay, could we, Mr. Chair, can we get an update on these two properties at our next C D C meeting? As, in the form of a, a small report, short report. Uh, and I don't care whether it comes from the chief building official through the C, the community development coordinator, or from the chief building official through the, through the C A O. But just kind of an indication of what's happening with these two properties.
So if it's the will of the committee to get an update on twenty-sixty-nine, do you have the address of the area?
No.
The will of the committee to have an update on the zoning? Or, or is that what you want? What, what exactly are you asking?
Yeah.
Zoning?
Well, we have, we have a bylaw in place for vacant and abandoned buildings. These, these, these are both at this point vacant. So they both fall under our vacant and abandoned buildings bylaw. So what I'm looking for is an indication of how that policy is being, how that policy is being executed and followed up.
So the will of the committee noting the heads? Yeah, okay, so that seems to be, have an update on this possibly.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so no delegations and presentations. We're on the six A one, which is the application to amend the site plan control agreement. Canal water, which is Wendy's treats, I believe that Wendy's stand are here via Zoom. If we need them. So what other Wendy, Wendy, the development coordinator, if you could just give us background?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so we have a revised application to amend the site plan control agreement twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-six. For Wendy's treats, which proposes to keep the existing residential vehicle on site year-round, also including grading and drains plan and resign an additional entranceway off of Canal Street. Also includes changes to the Walkford Street parking area and entranceway. You probably recall, we come application to amend this agreement that was reviewed by committee at the November fourth C D C meeting. Committee members had identified a few areas of concern and requested that some items be addressed prior to approval of the proposed amendment. So I think I have addressed the committee's concerns here together with the applicant in this revised draft agreement. Um, so in the agenda package, there is a draft agreement to amend the agreement. And there is a copy of the existing agreement where I showed the proposed changes to it in, in red, just for ease of review.
And development coordinator, Councilor Cameron, any other questions?
I do, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Wendy. Wendy, one of the conditions was that the propane tanks be removed for the winter. And I, the way I read this, I believe that they have been removed, but they're not in the agreement. They're not in the new agreement. There, I, unless I've missed it, I can't find where it's in the new agreement. And to be quite truthful, what I'm concerned about is the location of the, of the restaurant. And where the, the tanks are. It, it, it's kind of a, I don't want to say desolate area, it, it, it's not, but it, but it is away from, away from more or less strictly. And I'm a little concerned if the tanks are there over the border, it could possibly be vandalism or something. So I, I, and I really don't want to hold this, hold this site lineup, but I do think it should be in the agreement. Just in the case that if, if the current owner somewhere sell, then we have the site, it's already in the site. I, I'm, I'm quite sure that the owners, the current owners will remove them every year, but I still think it should be in the, in the agreement.
So through the chair, this is Councilor Cameron. Um, you'll see the item number nine on page twenty-eight, this is in schedule C. Where it says all structures and items that are shown as temporary on the site plan for me, exhibit one, schedule B to this agreement shall be removed from the property by December first each year and shall not be placed on site prior to March first each year. Um, and in the updated site plan that they provided, I wish I had page number here.
Twenty-five of fifty-one.
Yeah, it, these, the provisions are marked as temporary, so they will be.
Okay, that, that, that that, that's satisfactory with me. I just have one other, one other point. And in the, in the drawing on page twenty-six, the area behind or to the east of the truck is labeled gravel parking. I don't think that has ever been a parking lot. It's been a storage lot. Is it's, it's a small thing, but it, it is not a parking.
I don't understand.
Through, through the chair, Councilor Cameron, yeah, you're, you're correct. That is on the site plan identified as a storage area. Um, I think it's possible that the end near complete integrating drains plan incorrectly identified as a, as a.
Yeah, as, as, as long as we are aware of this, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Concerns been taken up? Are there any other concerns with, with the application?
I just have a question with regard to execution here.
Yes.
I do think that there's a recommendation, so through the chair to the clerk. Generally, when we're doing such an extensive amendment to a bylaw, the first procedure has been to introduce an entirely new bylaw and repeal the old one. Will you use that mechanism here this time?
Uh, through the chair, it works a little bit differently when it comes to site plans of this nature. Um, I believe our community development coordinator proposed an amendment because it's amending the original agreement. And with the new process that our legal has to go through with land titles. Um, our original bylaw with the original site plan has been registered. Now we have to enter into a new agreement that will show those amendments as an amending agreement. It's a little convoluted. Traditionally, when it comes to making a lot of changes or bending a lot of things in various agreements. I take the stance of just repealing, replacing. But in this case, for the land registry process, we would be doing an amending agreement and bringing forward this.
So in other words, the original bylaw will stand, and this will be an amendment agreement to the original bylaw. An, an amendment to an agreement that's passed under the existing bylaw.
Through the chair, that's correct. It's amendment of the original.
Thank you. Yep.
Con, I just had a question about that through the chair. Is that process changed so that you can clearly see that it was originally this agreement? And now here's the new agreement. This is what is different? So that you don't only see the most recent version, in a sense, you see transparency of the entire change of any title or amendment?
So through the chair, yes, that is correct. The original bylaw with the original agreement would be registered on title. And once this is executed by council, it goes to our legal department registers the amending bylaw and the agreement on top of. So everything is in the file together. So anyone will be able to throw it to the land registry office if, you know, if they're looking for the service of this information gathered. It makes a little bit, it's both clear, clearer and a little bit muddier depending on the person's ability to deliver the street offices.
Uh, Councilor Cameron?
Uh, yes, thank, thank you, yeah. And this, this just refers to page sixteen, and it's regarding the license. And, and I'm just, for my own information, is the license required? Is that an annual license or a one-time license?
Through the chair, that's a annual license, not such a big one.
That's all.
Any further questions?
Just, just, so I see the completion dates, right? So on page twenty, for the completion date, it says, you know, one year, or, you know, but I can't open up this, it's clearly not completed. Are we giving enough time to get all of these things done in time for that startup? Or is there any concern that we, that, that we have as far as this, that day goes? Maybe it's more Wendy's.
Yeah.
Through the chair, uh, through the board, I know that the applicants are eager to get started, so they may be operating this year, so I'm sure.
Alright. Alright, so I have a mover for the recommendation, Councilor Cameron. And the recommendation is that committee recommend the council adopt the bylaw to amend site plan control agreement twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-six as attached. Need a second. I'm second. Chris Ward for a second. And is there any further discussion or comments in regard to this? Alright, then I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any more? Alright, so on to six, uh, two, which is the application for the zoning amendment County Road two. Then Velvin on behalf of the leader. And Wendy, if you want to.
Uh, thank you, the chair. Um, so we have to proceed an application for a zoning bylaw amendment in November for this property on County Road two. I did not have a specific address just yet. Um, knowing that the C D C committee wasn't going.
Pause for a second. I just want to know that Mr. Mother did, did excuse himself and did leave the table. Sorry, I forgot to give, I forgot to give him time, and I just want to know sort of how that is. I'm sorry, Wendy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so knowing that C D C wasn't going to meet again for some time, staff were requested from council that council staff to schedule a public meeting for this application, and that was granted at the December meeting of council. So the public meeting is scheduled for this application on February twenty-second at six P M. However, would like to provide this preliminary report to the committee so that you have the information in advance of the public meeting and some details about the application. Just so the applicant does send his regret to you that the country today has very limited access to the internet, so is not able to attend tonight in for support vice. Um, I note that the application proposes to rezone these lands from residential second density, a holding zone, to residential second density special exception. And this amendment would reduce the required street and water bodies to act from County Road two and the river. It would also remove a holding provision that currently applies to this property to accommodate the construction of a single dwelling on private spaces as well as septic. So to date, we received comments from the Health Unit, um, I'm sure of Power Generation and South Nation Conservation Authority. We've asked that nation to review the geopolitical report and the environmental impact assessment on behalf of the township. Their comments are included in this package. Their, their comments include a request for some additional information to satisfy slow stability concerns on this property. The applicant's working with their engineers to provide this information. So this report for now can just be received for your information and the final report and recommendation that you provide to the public following the public meeting will be gathered. All of the comments from the public.
Anybody want to ask any questions?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. So a number of things come to my mind. First of all, will this, these misinformation in these reports, will they be available to the public at the public meeting? That's the first question.
Through the chair, yes, that's a regular question.
Alright, the next question is one of the things that, one of the issues that doesn't seem to be addressed in anything that I've seen. I could have missed it. Is there a, an entrance permit, a county entrance permit to this property? Has the applicant applied for an entrance permit? Do we have that base, is that base been covered?
Through the chair, yes, they have applied for it. Here is they have received an entrance permit from the counties. I am waiting for comments from the counties on this application. I'm expecting them, and I haven't received them just yet, but the applicant indicates he's received an entrance permit.
That he has received an entrance permit?
Yeah.
Approval of an entrance permit?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's, and then I think there's one other report that I was expecting to see. I'm a little bit disappointed here because the proposal here is for well and septic. And we know that municipal water and municipal sewer are located within what I would call reasonable distance from this piece of property. I'll, I'm disappointed that the applicant hasn't applied to connect to residential or to municipal water and municipal sewer. But we'll see what goes on at the public meeting, but the public may not even be aware of that issue. How is that issue dealt with at the public meeting?
Through the chair, the public meeting would be to receive comments from the public. So typically at a public meeting, if concerns or questions are raised, unless the applicant is there to address those questions. As, as we've seen in some meetings in the past, typically we would make note of the questions and NOBTech would include a response in their final report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, are there further questions or comments on it?
Through the chair, I just wanted to point out that on page thirty-four, site and
sorry, what page was?
Thirty-four of fifty-four. Something that seems maybe minor right now could have big impacts later. On the right side where there's a legend of the bylaws minimum requirements versus the site in discussion. If you look down to the top of bank setback, the bylaw minimum is thirty meters. This diagram, whether by mistake or just a error in whatever copying machine. It's not clear what the site is.
Fourteen point seven.
Well, is it fourteen? Because that's not a clear one when you compare it to the other ones in that diagram. I just wanted to point that out, that that should be something that's clarified because it changes the comparison quite a bit.
So, so the issue, as you went, I see that the community development coordinator has her hand up. But on my copy here, I, I see the point that the speaker is making. Is the one-on-one or is it something different? But on my copy here, it's quite clearly a one, but maybe the community development coordinator can add some clarification here. Because I see the speaker's point.
Through the chair, I can verify. The initial submission said four point seven meters. We followed up with some questions. And they changed it to fourteen point seven, when we noticed that the sketch didn't match the chart that was provided. So it was, it was updated from the original application, otherwise it looks a little bit different from the other. But the intent in the, the media is fourteen.
Is fourteen. Thank you. I'll raise that spot with that. Are there further questions? Or we're going to see this again on the twenty-second. And then it will be back to us again after that. We're always seeing.
Through the chair. The applicant has some work to do with their engineers to satisfy, satisfy septic's preference. If, if that's complete and everything works okay with septication, I refer it to council at the February council meeting. If the applicant needs more time, we wouldn't be planning out timelines. But I think everyone would agree it would be better to wait to receive that information before council made a, a decision, so we would wait until, until March.
And one last question, and it's just that I get my head around it. The mayor brought it up, and it's about municipal water and sewer. You said that it's a holding zone. The holding zone would indicate that, that would. You said that it's a holding zone, the holding zone would indicate that, that would require it, correct or no?
To the chair, so the holding zone, per se, only by law, it's. Section six point two A, which is for residential second density, to pondering for the land zone R two dash H. The holdings symbol will not be lifted into the municipality deeds, that there is sufficient capacity to provide municipal services to the site.
Well, that's an interesting wording.
I, I would note that the capacity is there, or.
Capacity, but they don't have to use the capacity? It's interesting wording.
Seem to require that. I would also note that the property is not within the cardinal salvage area, it's in the rural policy area, where we don't require municipal servicing for other properties. Would also note that in our draft zoning by law, that this property is not proposed to have a holding zone. I think the bigger concern for this property is in slope stability and making sure that that's dressed and that engineers can prove and can agree that it is safe to construct.
Just, I'm going to follow up first, if that's, if that's okay. Pop a lot of hands there. So just, just so that I'm. Correct, or at least I think I want, that the municipal water goes on the north side of the highway, directly across from, from where it is, does the sewer go? The sewer doesn't go that far, but the water does.
To the chair, that would be, that would be.
Okay, so with regards to the soil and the conversation we just had, so we will expect to see something, we'll have to believe, we have to see something about that prior to, because sometimes I think that some seems to be covered later on. We will see that before, before the.
Chair, my, my plan would be to bring after the public meeting, if all of the concerns can be addressed, to bring this to the February council. If the concerns cannot be addressed, and the applicant needs more time to do that, I can bring it back to CDC in March if that's a committee's desire, and then it could go to, to council at the end of March, keeping in mind March twenty four is the meeting for CDC.
Yeah, and we're not, yeah, I will be attending. So we just don't, we just don't want to delay it, so we can, we can deal with it as council. You know, keep moving this, this again, otherwise we can deal with it at the start of March and then again at council.
To the chair, yes, that's correct, so we actually received this application in November, after the CDC meeting. And then in the complete application on December sixteenth, for the thirty day timeline. Ninety days to make a decision, so it's, if it's because we're waiting on information from the applicant, I think all parties would agree that we can wait a little bit longer and not beat that ninety day timeline, but I would want the township to lose another risk.
Still want to follow up on the question. Yes. Anyone else?
I just, there seems to be an awful lot of concerns in your septication or. Sloping stuff there, I don't think we really want to. Hold off, but we have different information. Circulation. I know the. Reports I've had on septication, there's been a bunch of applications. But turned down lately alone. River septication, very sticky, so. Statement of the situation with the type of bio. Perhaps just in areas. With demon. Recommendation approved by them before we.
And I'd just like to follow up on previous speaker's comments, because when I go to page thirty six of fifty one. I see that there was a geotechnical subsurface investigation prepared by St. Lawrence Testing and Inspection, dated January the thirty first. Now, that geotech investigation, I don't think we've got that in our package here. But on page thirty eight of fifty one, South Nation. South Nation quotes. And says, on, under the heading of slope stability, the engineering consultant's letter states that the soil conditions of the site are not suitable to build a building with standard foundations. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that the engineering consultant is St. Lawrence Testing, but I really. I'm assuming that we have the geotechnical subsurface investigation from St. Lawrence Testing, do we not, to the chair? Do we have that?
Yes, correct, we have.
And, and does it, is it, is it congruent with what I've just read? Soil conditions of the site are not suitable to build a building with standard foundations.
To the chair, yes, it does say that and recommends a foundation type to be used, however, it's. Association is not satisfying that there's enough information provided there to determine the feasibility or the cost of constructing. The dwelling that we've asked for some additional information. They found the geotechnical report focused more on soil analysis than it did on slope stability.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, let's wait in the public meeting.
Exactly, alright, so no further comments or questions, there's no recommendation there, so we're moving on to six B, I think, correct? Which is, I think, a pair of updates, Mr. Mother, you want to slide over the table? Sorry. Alright, Chair notes that Mr. Mother has required a seat. Alright, so six, six B under work, update for the Leeds Brentville Improv Small Business Trade Show.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, so here's a lighter topic for us. And the Leeds Brentville of some trade show is coming up, it was originally scheduled for the end of February, it has been rescheduled for March twenty fourth to twenty sixth, that's a Thursday through Saturday. In hopes that the March date would allow for your capacity for more attendees to join us. And so, Edwardsboro Cardinal is a sponsor for the event, and we reserve a ten by ten foot booth at the show. Really excited to be there and set up a new booth, in the past, big members have also volunteered to work at the trade show alongside staff. I'm going to recommend that only one or two members at a time, just to help with capacity limits, and so I don't know what the restrictions are going to be at that time, but I welcome you to join me at the, at the booth, I've got a sign up sheet here for you to sign up to some time afterwards, and welcome any ideas from the big members on what you'd like to see happen.
And, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Wendy, or. We can, we can add her name to the list by.
Oh, yes, contact me by telephone or, or email, I've seen the active meeting, I've got a sign up sheet here.
Yes, duly chair. To Wendy or maybe to the CEO, I'd like to, maybe I have to make a motion, that we have people participating, golf shirts, not T-shirts. Something respectable with every kind of township or sweater, some sort. If you need a motion for that. I'm not sure, I guess if we're going to go some sway, let's look, look, those ones we had last, two years ago. For a trade.
That's second that one. Something. Hold, hold on a second. I'm not sure what the motion was. Motion is to get players attending to have.
Golf shirts and a nice sweater, I, I compare to being out here for seventy dollars sweater. Twenty dollars sweater. I'm going to go there.
Township. Township.
That's right, but not a sweatshirt, not a sweat. Golf shirt and a nice sweater, so.
Okay, so just so that I get this right here, we're, we're going to supply the town to spend this.
Yeah, whoever's going to go, take their, you know, whoever's going to put their name in, take their size and order.
To, to the C I O, do we, do we have shirts or? That are off shirts. Around that, that would be available to do that with, and. Or if we don't, because we, will we be able to get some by, by then?
Through, through the chair, I, I, I am not sure what we have in stock as far as sizing those. If that's something that the committee wants, we would need, we would need confirmation on sort of who's looking to attend with their sizing in short order to, to have any opportunity to, to.
To do it.
To, to get things ordered and, oh.
Okay, thank you. Comment before I call the question, Connor?
May I suggest a pin, they're a lot cheaper and quicker to have made up, don't require different sizes, and can be modified sometimes, but could also have a colorful logo and a name.
Just council members, we all have, have a name tag already, but. There is a motion on, on the floor. It's been seconded, so. Any further comments?
Just to get clarity on the motion, is it for? Golf shirt or is it for a golf shirt and sweater?
Both, because if you don't know, I think that's going to be cold in March, and the last time we were in there was cold, we had our sweat coat on, actually.
Yeah.
So, I'd rather have a nice golf shirt, it's not a slip over sweater. It's one sweater, one golf. I don't think it's going to break.
Thank you for the. There's the clarity. Good, thanks for the. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can carry the votes? Alright. Wendy, were you finished? Was, was that what we did? Alright, so then the next update would be on the Central Digital Service Squad. Alright.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Our digital service squad member provided us with an update on the September digital service squad. We're actually coming to the end of the second round of funding through Digital Main Street. So she has provided us some numbers and an update to show how we're doing overall. I feel like this program has done really well on round two, our newest, newest squad member has just learned from the, the lessons from the first one, which is also very successful. Built on the website, created some fun webinars to engage your business community, and, and overall has done a really great job with the program. So, the funding would end at the end of February. In the first round, the, the funding was extended a few times, so we got to have Justin with us for a little bit longer. This time, we're, we're hopeful that the funding will be extended, and in the meantime, we've applied for some funds through C F T C to extend the program. Hopefully to kind of bridge that gap before we hear from Digital Main Street. Program has just done really well, we've had great feedback from our businesses, and we just need to see it any early because we're.
Thanks, thanks Wendy. Comments or questions regarding the digital service squad or?
I'll defer to council.
Oh, sorry, but it's here.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to, have we? Have we been successful of extending this grant before this expiration or not? We haven't been successful or yes?
Through the chair, we need to hear from Digital Main Street on whether or not we're going to extend the funding, and I think it would be extended to all of the recipients of that program. But we should hear from C F T C hopefully this week.
Good, thank you. So to the chair, so are you still, well, first of all, who is our digital service squad? I forget the name.
Name is Elizabeth Wallace.
Liz.
The first one was Justin St. Pierre, who is still, he works for the town of Prescott now, and this was his working under him, so it's been a good mentor and resource.
Okay, so what, what, through the, through the chair again. Are you fairly comfortable that all of our businesses are aware now of this digital service squad service? Are all of our businesses knowledgeable that it exists through our outreach or whatever outreach they've done? Do you see any holes in the outreach?
To the chair, oh, I couldn't identify any holes, all is a big ask, so I'm not going to say that all are built, but I think the squads done a good job in, in marketing and the township shares their posts on social media to make them aware. I speak to it when I talk to businesses that are maybe looking for some support. I'm impressed this time, I think that the first round of funding, not, not intentionally, but we had a lot of interest from the town of Prescott. And this time around, because I think businesses in Prescott had already used that resource, and that's that Edwardsboro Cardinal are benefiting more in the second round. It wasn't as widely as the first time around. So the reach is expanding.
So, so are they, are they still taking applications as of today tomorrow?
The shop here could be, I don't think for the. I don't think that applications are still being accepted for the grant, I think there are. Shop here is available all the time, and. The. The digital service squad, like their support are also available all the time, but speaking just for that digital transformation grant. I don't think that it's still available, I think there are. Oh, closed on December thirty first, thank you. No, the funding is, the grant is no longer available, it closed on December thirty first, it closed in here.
Okay, so, so they're not in a position, unless they get this extension, to accept any more applications for funding.
Correct, I, but I think the extension that I'm speaking of is the extension to, to fund like the salary of our squad member.
Right, service, not the, not the grant.
Yeah, and I, the service is, is still really valuable, like the squad member will go and visit and do an assessment of your business, if you come up with an action plan and, and just help you with resources like social media and things like that, it's goes so much further beyond the degree.
Right, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
That's correct, so, I mean, I think the extension is hopefully in anticipation of us getting, getting extended. And is there, are we going to leave, you know, businesses in the lurch halfway through the process if we, if it cuts off at the end of February or?
To the chair, no, I think. As of. On Thursday, there were still dying head grants that still had been paid out from Digital Main Street, and then I think as I was on the conference call, those were paid out, but you need to, the recipients need to complete some training and do some work, and before they receive that funding, the digital service squad can help them with that follow up if they have any questions. And I need the, the, Justin is still with the town of Prescott to, to help and support businesses. No one's going to be left, I.
And then, you know, I mean, the reputation, I've heard from a few people, you know, one of them is in one of the business associations, and, and, you know, they love what's happening as well here, and I mean, that meaning that they did is a good, you know, it really shows a lot of stuff to be doing, and it just, you know, I think it's been a real positive for us.
So, it's a fantastic program to help businesses get, you know, at least the, the first and the second round. Set up in digital ways that, especially through the pandemic, that they may never have even done before, it's just fantastic. Anyone else? Good, alright, so, thanks for the update, Wendy. Sorry, I keep doing that, the development coordinator, my apologies. Item sixty, play, there's nothing, under number seven, which is inquiries and notices of motion, does anyone have any inquiries or notices of motion?
I guess it's been a while since we've been together, obviously, and I wasn't sure, and I've been asking. I, I guess it's been a while since we've been together, obviously, and I wasn't sure, and I'm not asking for this meeting, but maybe if we could have something for the next meeting to make, to talk about as far as uh, anything going on with the uh. Now I've lost my train of thought, the site ready auto, auto plant conversation, but. I don't want to say anything going on there, but uh.
Maybe the, do you wanna do a quick, come on?
No, no, I can do a quick. But, but I can't remember where we left off with this committee, so I'm gonna go back a few steps. So just to, to refresh everybody, we had nominated two thousand acres for the job site challenge. And uh, we had spent a lot of time talking with Infrastructure Ontario. About how to go about getting control of that land. And uh, at some point prior to the end of December, uh, council made the decision that we would attempt to purchase that two thousand acres. So uh, council approved the, the uh, submission, the creation of an offer to purchase. And the submission of an offer to purchase to Infrastructure Ontario and that was done. Uh, now, that process has uh, has sort of become stalled, if I can put it that way. We don't know why it stalled, uh, while we have some indications of why it stalled. I shouldn't say that, that I'm not delivered to, to talk about right now. But it is stalled. In the meantime, we've had a communication from the job site challenge team. And I'll let the CIO Grant uh, give the gist of that communication. But it was a communication that came to all of the applicants that are in the job site challenge program. And we're all in the same boat and I'll just let Mr. Grant speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just with respect to that communication, uh, it was pretty, as, as the mayor indicated, uh. Pretty generic that they, they've acknowledged that they sort of received all, all of the information that uh, was required as part of our submission. And that they are reviewing uh, each of those submissions and uh. That there will be uh, some, some delay before they determine. Particular states.
That's it, that's it, that's basically it.
All right, uh, further inquiries or notices of motion, council to the law, Mr. Mayor?
Um, through the chair, I just was wondering if we would be able to be provided with an update to, in a similar fashion to. The uh, the changing of ownership of the land that. Uh, the former Prescott machine loving business was in.
So I can speak to that, Mr. Chair. So earlier tonight, uh, council uh, passed the bylaw. To borrow uh, things of two and a half million dollars. To enable the township to purchase that land. The deal will close on Thursday morning at eleven o'clock. When we have the final signing of the papers to transfer the ownership of that property over to the township. The township is the corporate entity, so the title will rest with the township, but all the responsibilities for repayment of the loan. Administration of the property, uh, looking after the building, et cetera, will fall under the division. Of the township known as the Port of Johnstown. So basically, uh, the deal will close on. What's Thursday, the tenth, I think. So, as of, as of the tenth, at eleven thirty in the morning, we will be the owners of that property and. That's where it sits. And I might as well say, it was a public meeting. The loan is for a period of sixty months. And uh, the loan payments will be made by the port. But I can also say that Port Management Committee is in advanced talks with uh, one potential tenant of the building. And uh, there are a couple of other potential tenants that are asking questions that are looking for an opportunity to, to. To speak to us if the prime tenant uh, doesn't follow through within a reasonable period, thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty days. So we hope within thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty days that we will have a tenant that will basically be responsible for. Either all of the repayment of the loan, monthly payments, or a portion of the monthly payments. So that's the update on that particular project, Mr. Chair.
Sir? And anyone else? Just Wendy? I do have one, one inquiry. Unusual maybe that the chair does, but uh, been contacted by several business owners here in uh, Spencerville in regard to. Uh, the ongoing issue with the new parking signs, so um, Mr. Mayor, maybe if you can give us. Quick update on. On the issue with those, with those parking signs and what uh, possibly can be, can be done with those.
Well, I can certainly address the issue. Can't necessarily answer the solution, but sure. So we understand that on the west side of County Road forty-four, the no parking here to corner sign. Uh, it seems to be justified from a, a traffic control point of view. I've had. Several people over the last couple of years speak to me about that because when a vehicle parks right tight to the corner, it does impede visions. The vision of a vehicle traveling eastbound and then turning either uh, right or left onto County Road forty-four. So. I think the no parking uh, zone is a nine meter zone. And that's been signed and there doesn't seem to be any problem there. The problem is on the other side of the street. Where the county, through what initiative, I don't understand because it certainly wasn't. Any request from our council or from any individual on our council or from any individual that I know of uh, personally. But the county has determined that on the east side of the street, there should be a similar no parking zone. So that vehicles coming eastbound can swing wider uh, when turning to the right to get onto County Road. Twenty-one. And similarly for counties that, for, for vehicles that are going northbound. Uh, there's a, a no parking so that they can sort of make a dog link. Uh, before they initiate their left bound, their left turn lane. So long and short of it is, I think it's a twenty-three meter. No parking zone on the east side of the street, which has been signed in two locations. So that's the issue, that's the problem. Now I've spoken twice to the Director of Public Works at County about this issue. The first time I talked to him was the same night that uh, I think, I can't remember what the committee meeting was, Mr. Rainbow was here. And he certainly made his feelings known following the meeting. Right, and so I spoke to, uh, to the Director of Public Works the very next morning when I was in Brockville. And he said that he hadn't looked at. Uh, now that nothing seemed to happen. And then I, when I was at County Council last week. I actually met with him in his office again, closed the door so that I knew that I would have his attention. And it indicated to him that the problem had to be addressed one way or another, but that it couldn't continue the way it was. And would he please have his engineers go make a second analysis of what they had done? Now I'm informed today that they were back on February the second to take a second look, but that they didn't change anything. So I'm a little bit um. Dissatisfied with that result and I'll be back at County Council tomorrow morning. And I'll be in the Director's office again tomorrow morning, restating my request and uh. And engineers are engineers, they have a job to do, but there are templates for truck turning radiuses. And as of this point in time, I haven't asked to see those templates for the truck turning radiuses for that intersection. But if they're not going to do something, I'm going to insist on seeing the templates because in my estimation, there's enough. No parking on the east side. When you consider the Joe Computer driveway, I don't like to use personal names here, but. When you consider the, the driveway that's on the east side, I think there's enough no parking there to accommodate. Any movement of the trucks, but I'm, but I'm not sure of that. And one other possibility exists, which is that. Uh, maybe we have to indicate that trucks longer than such and such a. Such and such feet uh, won't be able to navigate that turn, but. I, I don't know how to go about solving the issue other than to tell the engineers I wanna see their templates. So that's the next step.
We don't, that's not something you need as a formal request from, from the council of here.
Not at this point.
Counselor, I don't wanna turn it into a debate.
Yeah, just, just a suggestion, go there. When I was brought up, uh. Council years ago, when the old rail bank lot was tore down there in the Temple Park. Air area there, that they take some of that land, land on the north side there, widen that turn. At the time, county wouldn't even hear of changing. I feel like that's uh, the option to get away from. The turn there, make the turn, roads are narrow, so widen that, everything a bit of an angle, we could still have the park there, but. Cut, cut a little bit of angle off the corner, so they have more room to turn.
So, if I may, so through the chair of the CIO, is the, is that, maybe counsel, you would have the answer at the top of your head. Uh, is that lot where the clock tower stands? That's owned by the township, is it not?
Through the chair, for the best of my knowledge.
Right. So then it becomes a question, would council have the will to work with county to make a portion of that? Available for that widening that, we won't deal with that right now, but, but uh, I'll float that idea by them and, because it would be expensive. Uh, to, to reline that, realign that uh, that street eastbound, but. I'll, I'll keep that in mind tomorrow when I'm talking with the director.
All right, any further inquiries or notices of motion? Hearing none, moving on to. Question period, we lost Wendy, so there's no questions there and we do have one person in the gallery. Do you have any questions regarding the agenda from tonight or anything that was discussed at the meeting tonight? No, not tonight, no. Perfect, uh, thank you very much. And so there's no other people looking, have questions, correct? Is there any hung goods or no closed session? I just need a mover for adjournments. Ron, somebody's gonna move it.
I think you had a question.
Yeah.
I, I do have a.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said.
I, I just thought, I, um, I, I was wondering about um. Bringing something to council and uh. The response I got through the office, through the clerk, was that I'd have to wait till next Friday to get a response. I'm just wondering, and it would be for the following meet, meeting on Monday. Just wondered if that's always the way it is or?
Point, point of order, Mr. Chair, will the speaker identify himself?
Uh, Brad Montroy is my name.
Oh, sorry, Brad.
The masks, do it, yeah, for sure.
I, I've just been trying to deal with something and I wanted to bring it to this meeting and I've sold this lesson to deal with it and it would be the following one, but.
So you're asking for a, for a delegation?
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. I don't normally do it, so yes.
Yeah, okay, so. To the clerk? With the normal, the normal, can you just outline the normal procedure so that everyone knows it?
Yes, so through the chair, it depends on the topic that the delegation is requesting. Uh, this topic is best suited for the committee, the whole for administration, finance, refers to bylaw enforcement. Um, through our conversation via email, I did inform him that the agenda is set with a meeting through the chair. On usually the Friday morning before the agenda is sent out and then I'd be returning an email to them confirming that this Friday.
So.
And I was just wondering if that was normal because just a prep, preparation or um, online. And it leaves me in lurch till Friday and I might sometime get an answer on Friday to be prepared for Monday.
I think, um, do you wanna answer how you, I mean, how you decide which committee is appropriate for which topic?
I kinda understood that side of it, I just the timing of. How come it took so long to get whether or not it could be on the agenda, you know, whenever I was reaching out prior?
So through the chair, I did inform Mr. Montroy of the process, that the chair reviews the agenda with staff. The Friday before the agenda goes out, the agenda is set for Monday evening. And that was made clear through emails. And the topic is based on uh, our terms of reference and what is discussed in each meeting.
So, so that would be um, at least from my experience, uh, Mr. Montroy, through, through everything, when um, something comes up that is CDC related. Wendy and I have a, the development coordinator and I have a conversation during the week about um, anyone that has a delegation. Uh, she keeps me up to date on anything that might be, need to be added to, to the agenda. We have a conversation on either Thursday or Friday and then everybody's informed out from there, so. Um, from my, you know, perspective, uh, that's, that is how staff functions and how they do their job in relation for the way that I chair.
Okay, I, I was just following up just to see if that's always the way it is or if it's in far enough notice that you would know. Know about it earlier or, or not.
I think typically if it's something that staff can, that staff can. Deal with, that they typically would on their own, but if it's something that a delegation that we need to, to hear, they, they put you with the appropriate committee and we will see you. Uh, it sounds like next Monday.
There's another factor, Mr. Chair, and that is that I think our procedural bylaw only allows. A limited number of delegations at each meeting and the staff may be dealing with several requests that we don't know about.
Sure, okay, that could influence it as well. Okay, uh, any, do you have any other questions, Mr. Montroy? No?
That's it.
Okay, sorry, I, I thought you said you didn't have a question, that's why.
I didn't on tonight's meeting.
That's why, my, my apologies. Um, so we'll see you next Monday by the sounds of it. Okay, okay.
Still to be confirmed.
Still to be confirmed on Friday. All right, so no closed session, so now I need a mover for adjournment. Moved by Chris Ward, seconded by Greg Montherall in favor, undecipherable, everybody's out. Seven thirty something, I can't see the.
Thirty.
I can't see the numbers on my, and I will note that that may be a record for the CDC, by the way.